Okay, I'll get started. Welcome to the City of Milton Virtual Common Council Meeting Tuesday, November 17th at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly and Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Bill motioned and Linda seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? We have an agenda. Inga is supporting the Rock the Ma- oh, there we go.
We need a flag, right?
We need a flag. It's so much easier.
I'll switch back to supporting Rock the Mask in a minute.
Okay, alright, so we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I'll lead it tonight. And there's a flag over Inga's shoulder there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, public comments. Inga, do you want to ask for identification of the 2081681 number?
Yep, I just got confirmation that it's our friend Becky from the Milton Courier, so.
Alright, we'll mute her all night then. Welcome, 6082081681. Um, so are there any public comments? Nope. Not that we can see. Alright, so the next exciting part of the agenda is the mayoral proclamation. Shop Wisconsin downtowns this holiday season. Whereas the City of Milton celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. And whereas COVID has negatively impacted the stability of small businesses in the City of Milton, and many are concerned about staying in business. Nationally, 62% of US small businesses reported that they need to see consumer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of 2020 in order to stay in business. And whereas support for small businesses impacts the local economy as 67 cents is reinvested into our community for every $1 spent with local businesses. And whereas supporting a local business secures jobs, boosts our local economy and preserves our communities, small businesses employ 47.3% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas local businesses need your support now, your local businesses continue to provide safe options for online shopping, pickup, delivery and in-person visits. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim our community as an advocate for Shop Wisconsin Downtowns to make everyday Small Business Saturday and urge our residents of our community to shop Wisconsin downtowns and support Wisconsin small businesses, artisans, craft people and merchants during this critical time and beyond. And further, I urge all community members to participate in Small Business Saturday on November 28th, 2020 and the promotions of this day by the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce. And I will sign this, the 17th day of November, 2020. So, yay for our small businesses. Open those packages. Okay, approval of the consent agenda.
One more.
Was that you Larry?
Yes.
Okay. I had a message pop up over your face. And Linda, seconding it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Public hearing, discussion and possible action regarding the 2021 City of Milton annual budget. And you had some documents that were sent to you? And do you want me to open the public hearing or does staff have comments to make before I open the public hearing?
No, I can, well, it's ultimately up to you, but I can go through, you know, the presentation again. You know, seeing that no one's in the audience, I know it'll be redundant for everybody on the screen here today, but you know, Becky is here, so that is wonderful. And perhaps there'll be folks who view this at a later time. So if you'd like, I can go through a presentation. I promise to try to make it brief. And then we can open the public hearing, or if you wanted to do the public hearing first, that's up to you as well.
Your presentation can be part of the opening of the public hearing, right?
I mean, technically we should-
I could open the public hearing, Al could make his presentation, Mark asks, or how?
I suggest that there could be, well, as a part of that, of course, there's the budget history and everything that's listed on the agenda. If you wanted to open the public hearing, that would be fine. And then have Al make his comments at the commencement of the public hearing to outline the budget issues. And then you can call for comments by the public. That would be appropriate.
Thank you. I think that's what I'll do. I will open the public hearing and introduce our city administrator, Al Hugh.
Thank you. So again, I will just kind of go through a brief presentation. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So again, you know, I apologize for the kind of the, you know, the fact that a lot of folks have seen this already, but again, want to make sure that for anybody who watches this after the fact, that they kind of understand the process that we have been going through for quite some time and then where we're headed. Um, so again, I'll try to skip through these. I know this gets redundant, but you know, every year we have the same goals in mind, balanced budgets, stay within levy limits, qualify for expenditure restraint. We don't want to reduce services and we try to not borrow. In the 2021 highlights, there are some new numbers on this slide that we didn't have back on November 4th. And the good news is, is all of those numbers that you'll see tonight have gotten better since November 4th. So that's always a good thing, too. Expenses are only increasing 1%. That's down from 1.5% on November 4th, and that's down from 1.54 when we saw this presentation on October 20th. That is, is a result of, you know, the continued reductions that we have done in this budget process in order to qualify for levy limits. So that is a good, good sign. Expenses are only increasing 1%. And you'll see in the 2020 budget, we had our expenses at about $5 million. And this year it'll be about 5.1. So just a small increase of about 50,000, give or take in there, 51,000. And that represents a 1% increase. The contributing factors to the budget construction for 2021. The city's net new construction of 2.152%, therefore allowed us to raise our levy limit by $55,000. That 2.152% equates to about $9.2 million in net new construction and about $27 million in overall growth that the community has seen. Expenditure restraint is that cap that is imposed by the state that although we may increase our levy, we can only increase our expenses by a certain percentage. Sometimes those are diametrically opposed. Sometimes they run concurrent to one another. This year, they're pretty similar to one another if you were to chart them out on a line graph. The reason we want to qualify for expenditure restraint is that there is a state aid payment that comes with communities that are able to meet that restriction. And generally for the City of Milton, that's been about $100,000 over the last five or six years. We're estimating it to be about $139,000 next year. And then of course, there's always that piece of affordability that we talk about when we make a lot of different decisions, whether it's the budget or borrowing or a construction project. We talk about what can we do versus what should we do? We always say that we don't want to borrow, but we could. We're at the place now after six years where we actually do have borrowing capacity. But the issue that we're still facing is that we levy what we consider to be an inordinate amount of the taxpayers to pay for existing debt service. So there's an affordability component to it. We could borrow, but the question is, should we borrow? And we have kind of maintained that line that we shouldn't borrow unless it's absolutely necessary. Cities growth. Again, the city this year was the second fastest growing in Rock County, city in Rock County. Evansville slightly beat us out. City's overall value increased by about $27.5 million, which was a substantial increase. Last year it was about 31, I believe. Oh, there you go, right there. It's like I, it's like I created this almost. And it's almost like I've gone through it like five times. So you know, our, our growth was down a little bit, but still at a very, very, very positive trajectory. The $31 million that we saw last year, again, I haven't gone back since 1838, but my guess is the community has never grown at $31 million before in its history. And 27.57 was probably in its top five years or top three, maybe even top two. And levy limits are, are constructed through the concept of net new construction. So we saw 27.57 million dollars worth of new growth. We saw on the previous slide that about 9.2 of that was net new construction. What that means is there was organic growth of about $18 million. A little bit more about levy limits. Levy limits are self-imposed, or are imposed, imposed cap by the state of Wisconsin. We must stay within levy limits. We do not have a choice on levy limits. The only way you can exceed levy limits is through a referendum process. As we sit right now today, our budget that you're going to see, that we're walking through qualifies for expenditure restraint and qualifies for levy limits. And then here's just a little bit more on expenditure restraint as we talked about. We've seen that kind of hover around that $100,000 mark. We know that expenditure expenditures cannot increase by more than 2.62% as we talked about before. We're only increasing 1%, so we're in great shape on that one. So what does this all mean? The city's 2021 draft budget will levy to the max, which is actually less than what it was last year. This budget does qualify for expenditure restraint and does qualify for levy limits. If we do decide to make any other subtractions from this budget, it wouldn't improve our position in terms of levy limits or ERP. So by what I mean, when I say that is it's not necessary. But any additions would require a subtraction from another line in order to continue to meet that levy limit and ERP threshold. So what will the impact be? The City of Milton will collect less taxes in 2021 than we did in 2020. And we'll see what that number is in a couple of slides. The tax rate for the City of Milton will decrease by 1.74%, so about 1 and 3/4%. So we're going to go from 9.79, which is what you saw in your tax bill last December, to 9.62. So this is, I believe this is about the second or third year in a row we've seen that number go down. Expenses are only increasing 1%, and again, that's down from where we were on November 4th. There is still no reductions of service in this budget and there is still no new levy-supported borrowing. And all employees are still receiving the same compensation throughout the entire organization, whether they are represented by a union or not. And this still maintains the capital funding and infrastructure funding levels that we've seen in previous budgets. So the big outs, the big unknown piece, the big outstanding piece, which we've talked about at great length at several of our last meetings, is still that fire department allocation. The budget that we have currently constructed is the budget that was recommended by the Fire Commission a few weeks ago. And it shows an increase of about $25,000 in the, from our 2020 contribution. So our total contribution is about $416,000 to the fire department. The increase needed for the total fire department is about $1 million. And that's why we're working with the surrounding townships on the restructuring of their contracts. There will be a discussion tomorrow night regarding the replacement of an ambulance at the Fire Commission agenda that is not represented in the Fire Commission's budget that was recommended a few weeks ago. So that will have to be an outside conversation from the operating budget. But we always knew that was going to be that case anyways, and that's the way it's always been in the past. We typically don't fund capital through an operating budget, at least at the fire department. We do that at the City of Milton, but the fire department isn't able to do that at this time. We still don't know exactly where everybody is shaking out. We do have good news from the Town of Harmony, which is obviously our biggest partner in this, in this endeavor outside of the Town of Milton. But we, we don't have an update yet from the Town of Lima or Johnstown. But we do know that the Town of Koshkong is going to meet on November 30th to discuss their contract. And again, if there are any changes, for some reason, if Lima or Johnstown or Koshkong drops out or requests a change in their service boundary, that will have a residual effect on the overall Fire Commission budget, which would, will then have to be sorted out amongst the townships that remain, us included. So here we are with the 2021 budget construction, and this is what we were talking about with levies. The levy itself is decreasing by about $9,000. So it was at 3.411 last year, and this year it is decreasing to 3.401. So we are, what that means is we are collecting less taxes this year in 2021 than we did in this current year, that year in 2020. Pause for a moment for the applause from behind me. Who thought a two-year-old would be so excited about municipal budgeting? So carrying on, again, we've all seen this already, but again, I want to kind of walk through it. Employee relations makes up, you know, the largest part of our budget. As it is with almost any organization, employees' wages are the, the biggest piece. The good news is, in this budget, it's only increasing about $53,000. And then you see what makes that up, a 1% increase for non-protective employees, a 1% contractual wage increase, WRS contribution increase for protective employees, and then health insurance increases and plan changes. We know we saw a, a small increase to our overall health insurance of about 2.9%, if I remember correctly, which is a very small number compared to what we have seen in the past. So we are very thankful for that. In terms of non-property tax revenue, and again, because this is a revenue, it is a little bit counterintuitive that anytime you see anything in a parenthetical annotation, it means that that revenue source is increasing. Because we're looking at the overall changes in the levy, anytime there's an increase in revenue, it means it decreases our levy. So that's why that is, is denoted that way. So ultimately, we're seeing our non-property tax revenues increase by about $60,000. And there's a number of items that make that up. But the one I want to point out is interest income is actually decreasing by about $42,000. And that is really a representation of what we are seeing in the financial marketplace out there. We've been very fortunate to, the whole country has been very fortunate over the last couple of years to see interest income increasing. And this year we expect it to decrease precipitously. $42,000 may not seem like a lot, but it is, it's a considerable drop compared to what we have been seeing over the last few years. But overall, our non-property tax revenues are increasing by about 60,000. Operational expenses, there isn't much change in here. You'll see there's about $30,000 in general government expenses are increasing. That's predominantly from the workers' compensation and property liability insurance, something that we don't really have control over, as well as our assessor's contract, which we talked about a few weeks ago. Because we delayed the revaluation that we had planned for 2020, that's going to get moved to 2021. So therefore, there will be an increase in 2021. And then this $25,000 here represented for public safety is what we just referred to earlier, a few slides ago, in regards to the fire department's contribution from the City of Milton. Operational expenses, again, not much change happening here. Contracted building inspections, looks like it's going up $43,000. But if you remember a few slides ago on our non-property tax revenue, we saw that that revenue was also increasing by $43,000. Because we have contracted building inspections, we take the money in and then we pay that money out. So as we see more inspections happening, more building permits being taken out, that number, it nets out to zero, but there has to be a corresponding expense to that increase in revenue. And then down here, we are continuing to reduce our debt service. Slowly but surely, we are making good progress in that. We'll talk about where we're, where we are still at in terms of debt service towards the end of the presentation. But slowly but surely, $60,000 will be paying less in debt service than in 2021 than we did in 2020. And again, that's a big number compared to where we were at. So here's some new information from previous presentations. This was included in your packet two weeks ago, but it was not part of the presentation. This is our capital list. This is the items that we have included in our 2021 budget that will be paid for. The first couple of items are from the general fund levy. And then it will look at also the corresponding items that are being paid for from the utilities. So you'll see a number of items that are kind of related to basically public works, shouldering attachment, replacement garage door, small mower, truck box replacements in order to extend the useful life, life of the overall truck. Just replacing the box is considerably more efficient and less expensive. And then we have our typical allocation for squad cars, replacing one and a half squad cars. And again, as you remember, there won't be a situation next year where there is a police officer driving around in a vehicle with two wheels. It's really that we kind of pre-fund each year. So, so each year we can level that out. So one year we get one squad car and then next year we're able to get two, and then we can continue that trend on. So it would be something out of like a Dr. Seuss book, I think, if they had two wheels. Again, the last couple of pieces here, just some general landscaping items, tree removals. And then we have our street projects, $100,000 allocated towards to be determined street projects. And we always kind of bring that list out in the beginning of, of the, of the next year. So we'll look for that probably in February or March. And again, these are, are levy-supported street projects. So those are street projects above and beyond what would be funded through the wheel tax, as it's known. A few items in the non-levy funding sources. So street maintenance, again, this is the wheel tax. We know we're going to do Cottonwood Lane. We have some residual concrete pavement improvements that will fund through the wheel tax. And then the HMA preventative maintenance. That's really, again, we're looking at probably, you know, some seal coating and again, preventative maintenance. It's one of the major aspects of wheel tax that we want to do. We want to extend the useful life of what we have. So we're not saddled with a much larger and exponentially larger expense at a future year as if we let our streets deteriorate. And then every year, we always have roughly $25,000 worth of sidewalk repairs. And that's, you know, something that's nice that we offer in the City of Milton as opposed to assessing the homeowners for the sidewalks that need to be repaired in front of their home. We pay for that out of our assessment fund. Some utility projects that we will look at, because we are doing Cottonwood Lane, there, there'll be utility work done in, in, in congruence with that. Some smaller, excuse me, GIS items, meter replacements, that's kind of a standard yearly allocation. Wastewater treatment plant upgrades and lift station upgrades. And then stormwater utilities. Again, Cottonwood Lane is going to see a fair amount of work done on it next year. And again, these are all funded through the utilities. So these are already kind of pre, pre-prescribed in our capital improvement plan that Mark Langner has put together. A few items, a few equipment items can be funded through the, oh, I'm sorry, the capital items that are not included in the 2021 budget. So every year we go through and we make a very long list in conjunction with Mark's capital improvement program. We also have needs that pop up throughout the year. So these are items that were originally on the list. Then we find the number that we're shooting for, which in this case was $254,000. And then we look to prioritize the items that are on that list. And what are the things that we can't live without? And what are the things that may be able to be extended? Or could we find an alternative funding source as the year goes on? So these are the items that didn't make the cut. This was something that the council asked to see a few years ago, so we've continued to include that in our budget presentations on an annual basis.
And you'll, you know, I'll go back to that, Scott and I talked about the body cam.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, and Scott, you can chime in where I might miss something. The company that we currently have the body cams with was bought by a larger company. And our current cameras are nearing their end of, are nearing the end of their useful life. And we have looked at a couple of different options for the body camera replacement. And we feel like the, the best solution, it's a more holistic approach. It's a five-year contract that includes replacement halfway through. They're fully warranted in case they get damaged on the job, et cetera. Get an upgrade halfway through and all that kind of good stuff. And that cost is 53,000. If we pre-pay for that upfront, they'll give us a slight discount. And as we alluded to earlier, the interest rate environment is not good. So any kind of discount that we can achieve by spending upfront dollars today, it's probably a better rate of return than we can get anywhere else. And, and I do believe that to be the case here. So where Scott and I are likely going to bring a proposal for that five-year contract of $50,000 to possibly fund that out of the police department's 2020 budget, because there's a a slew of things that obviously did not occur this year that has created budget unspent dollars in the police budget. And so this would be a good way to utilize some of that. And then we don't have to necessarily think about the body cam expenditure for the next several years. But I think in a perfect world, we would try to set aside $10,000 a year. So when the five-year contract comes up, we'll magically have $50,000. And that's if my math is right, 10,000 times five. Do you have anything you want to add to that, Scott?
No, happy to entertain any questions, but yeah, I have nothing to include.
Linda?
I was just wondering, I know years past, there was a concern about the storage of the information. Are we okay with that? Or is that going to be something that we will need to be looking at along with these cameras?
A part, part of the contract is cloud-based storage for all of our footage. So we are, we are, we're paying for it, but we don't have to have our own storage on site because the company is managing that storage for us. So no longer the need to buy extra servers and extra storage.
Anything else on that? See, so now nobody can blame me for giving a long presentation.
I have a question.
Hey!
Thanks. About the body cams. In that contract, Scott and Dan, if they're damaged by, I'm sorry, if they're damaged in an altercation, let's say, or they get damaged somehow on the officer's use of it, whether it's by, whatever it might be by, is there insurance that covers that or is that just part of the contract? I was just curious.
Part, part of the contract that we are buying is something that, Axon is the name of the company. It's something they call a technology assurance program. Built into that program is a brand-new complete set of body cameras at two and a half years and at the five-year point. And it also has a, a, what they describe as a very liberal replacement policy that anytime a camera is damaged, they will replace it. And that can be as simple as an altercation or somebody did something foolish and drives over a body camera or something like that, or that is all covered under the program. So there, well, there aren't any initial expenses for that if we have to replace a camera.
Any other questions on that? I've only got a couple of slides left, I promise. Just a few items that are not included again in the public or in the 2021 budget, chain link fence on the south side of the cemetery, decorative fence on the front of the cemetery, new trash barrels downtown and to be determined park equipment, equipment maintenance. And again, as we always talk about, there are a number of items on this list that have kind of a lower value as we roll into 2021. And we see if there are residual funds left, some of these items may be able to be purchased. Or we might be able to fund them through an alternative funding source if possible. So we always try to keep that in mind as we prioritize our list. So this is some kind of new information as well. And this is for the most part, the final information that we will see on our tax bills. This is the levy allocation. So this doesn't particularly show up on your tax bill, but it's important because it shows again, levy is the amount of money that is going to be collected by the entity from the taxpayers. And you'll see that ours is decreasing, the other entities are increasing. The other entities are increasing, uh, some slightly, uh, some a little bit more. What will show up on your tax bill is the tax rates. So overall, in the city of Milton, without, you know, the one piece that we don't know is the, uh, school tax credit. Overall, in the city of Milton, you'll see about a 1.59% increase on your tax bill. With this still to be determined. So it's not final yet, but these pieces up here are all final. So our, our portion of your tax bill will decrease. Schools will go up very slightly. Black Hawk Tech will go up even slighter, if that's possible. They, and they pass their referendum. And the counties will go up, uh, in between those two. Uh, so overall, there'll be a slight, there should be likely a slight increase in the tax bill itself. Uh, but all entities are really holding the line, uh, is what this shows to me very well within our region. So we appreciate that. Uh, another new piece of information is the John's disposal contract. And I believe Dan, is this the last year of our contract, 2021?
No, 2022, as it says on the slide.
Yep, it says it right here. So I was just, just checking to see if that was a typo. So, uh, this, uh, you, you'll see there'll be a very slight increase, uh, for, for the garbage, uh, disposal fee that we all pay on our tax bill. And this, these costs are predetermined through our contract that expires at the end of next year. Two years. So the budget unknowns, again, the really, the big piece is still that fire department piece. We're hopeful as every day passes that we get new information and it's good information. Obviously Harmony is the largest piece of that. And now that that is known, that helps us feel a little bit easier about this. But these, uh, items, Lima, Johnstown and Koshkane, uh, you know, do add up to, uh, uh, you know, an amount that, uh, we need to determine what that's going to be. So draft budget takeaways, this is kind of just the, um, summary of it all. City of Milton will collect less taxes in 2021 than we did in 2020. Will maintain current service levels, compensation amongst employees will be level throughout the organization at 1%. There is no change in the percentage paid on insurance premiums. We maintain capital infrastructure funding levels. General fund expenses are only increasing by 1%. This budget qualifies for state expenditure restraint and levy limits. And the budget has no new tax levy supported debt. This is the piece that I'd kind of mentioned before. We saw our overall debt service decrease by $60,000, but we're still at what we consider to be an inordinate amount of tax levy dollars going to support existing debt service. So again, for every dollar we collect, 23.2 cents goes to pay the credit card bill, things that we've already purchased. That's a, that's a high number, but it, every year that we get to this point in November and December, that number continues to decrease. And, you know, we're again, we're looking at that kind of magic window of 2024, 2025, 2026, that number starts to really drop off. Barring that there is no new debt that goes on top of that. So where are we at? We get to check all of those boxes. This is the first presentation we've given in 2020, when, in which all those boxes are checked. We do have a balanced budget. We are staying within levy limits. We do qualify for expenditure restraint. There is no reductions in service and there's no new borrowing. Any one of those boxes can be unchecked though, if, once we find out what happens to the, uh, in, in the fire department. Eventually we will have to check those boxes before we adopt the budget on December 1st. But I want everybody to know that where we're at today still could change. And as I kind of just mentioned, we are here today, should have a little start as you are here. And we plan to approve the budget on December 1st. So that would be our next regularly scheduled meeting. In the event that something comes up with the fire department between now and then, we obviously have next week, we could schedule a special meeting, uh, but we don't anticipate that at this time. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Al and Dan for, and Chief Mark Ward. Is there anybody from the public that would like to participate in our public hearing?
There wasn't anyone new that came onto the call or came onto the meeting.
I'm sure Becky's dying to say something.
Or does Becky have any questions? No?
All right then, um, seeing no one or hearing anyone and no new boxes have popped up on our Zoom meeting.
Becky said, nope, thank you. So that means we'll have a glowing article in the Courier on Thursday. Focuses on the fact that we're collecting less taxes and lowering the tax rate yet again.
And, um, uh, so I'm going to close the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed. And I do want a follow-up question, and I cannot believe that Linda has not even asked this yet. Like, it maintains, uh, what amount for our nonprofits?
The, the, the amount is still the same as we discussed two weeks ago, 10,000 to each entity with the understanding and hope that as we cross the calendar into 2021, if there are residual funds, we will look to then, uh, make kind of that one-time allocation uh, out of those, uh, residual funds from 2020, uh, to those two entities at an amount to be determined by, by the council.
Okay. So, um, oh, there she is. Linda?
I was just going to ask, are there any other, um, contracts that we have upcoming?
We don't really, yeah.
Do we have, I mean, as far as like the equipment or, you know, I know sometimes we use other, you know, companies for this, that and the other.
Yeah, we don't, I think Mark Schrader's contract, I think, is good for another year at least. I don't remember, last time we did it, we did it, we forgot about it and did it like in March. So
I think there's two years left on it. So it's year one of it.
And then there's the garbage contract. We renew our contract with Baxter and Woodman on an annual basis. Um, and that's, that's really a contract that's kind of an as needed. And now that we have Mark, um, you know, that, that as needed portion, um, continues to get smaller and smaller, but we still do utilize them.
Mark E., you mean Mark E.?
Yep. Well, Mark, Mark Schrader can be an engineer if he wants to. You know, and then, uh, our, we haven't, we haven't had a, a contract per se with IT. Our union contract is good for another two years. And, uh, you know, I, I, my guess is there might be some other contracts I'm not thinking of, but in terms of professional services, those are the ones that we have.
Okay. Thank you.
And then I know this is the first night we talked about the capitalist. I know some years there's a lot more questions, um, discussion, debate, whatever vernacular you, you want to use. When we adopt the budget, um, hopefully two weeks from tonight. Or tonight, if there wants to, if, if any of you have discussions that you want to bring up on any of those items that were included, excluded, or things that you didn't necessarily see on there. To give us some time if we need to, to research stuff or whatnot, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah. Because believe it or not, next week there's a holiday. Which seems crazy.
All right.
Any other questions or comments or, or concerns or clarifications or rumors that you want me to dispel or rumors that you want me to start?
Right. Let's just be all-inclusive here.
I do have one comment, uh, Dan and I, and Al, but Dan, thank you for sending, uh, the Excel spreadsheet. Uh, I appreciated it. Uh, I know it was a lot of detail, but I did take some time to go through it. So I have pretty good confidence, probably complete confidence at this point that the decisions you've made on the budget and the information you provide us is solid and has a good background for it. Just for what that's worth. Thank you.
I think staff really do appreciate that because it's, you know, it's an all department-wide, all city-wide effort. And I appreciate, you know, our leadership team and all the employees that participate in the budget process. And, you know, we should continually acknowledge that, um, that's important for us to have a team approach when we're creating a budget. Bill, you look like you wanted to say something.
Yeah, I was just going to, uh, make my comment that in a lot of ways, this is a spectacular budget. And, you know, thank you to Al, thank you to Dan, thank you to the department heads. You know, to be at, at this point, this, um, uh, your checklist is a good checklist and, uh, we've been able to uh, check them all off. Uh, we know 2022 is going to be a really difficult year. And so we're going to have to be very vigilant during 2021, I think, uh, you know, hopefully go in uh, in, in better shape. But some of the stuff that was in Al's presentation, um, helps us with, uh, 2022. You know, the fact that the debt, uh, amount, uh, what was it, 43,000, um, saved this year or lower this year and
Sixty.
About sixty, sixty, sixty-some thousand the following year. That gives us 20,000 more wiggle room in 2022 that, uh, we're undoubtedly going to need. So, I just think it's a fantastic job for 2021 and, uh, kudos to everybody involved.
I'll just make one quick correction. Bill, I wish what you said was 100% true. But the, the way the state does levy limits, uh, debt is an add-on, uh, to the levy limit. And when you have a reduction, they take
That's right. I forgot that piece. Yeah.
So it doesn't give us extra wiggle room, but it is, it is a planned approach. Um, and I, I wish there was a state statute that allowed us to utilize saving.
Yeah, I forgot that statement because you've made that before.
Yeah, the state rewards debt.
Yeah.
More than it rewards paying down debt, unfortunately.
But there is a new Bionian budget. So maybe, Bill, you know, you can try to get some legislation written this spring.
When he runs for assembly or? Well, we appreciate our elected officials that are doing the best that they can at the state level. And we can continue to, um, you know, contact them and encourage them to reward debt reduction instead of rewarding communicate communities that, uh, take on more debt. Anything else for anybody? All right. We will move on to item number eight. Discussion and possible action on resolution 2020-28 authorizing the redemption of a portion of the taxable general obligation refunding bond dated April 22nd, 2020.
So this is the second part of what we talked about 13 days ago on November 4th. When, um, when the council authorized a $900,000 advance to TID 10 to, uh, try to defees, um, the lift station debt. And and then TID 10 will re-reimburse, uh, the various funds over the next, uh, four and a half years. And this is the, uh, resolution authorizing the, uh, payoff of the 1.22 million dollars in, in, in bonds. So I'll take any questions if people have them. This, this memo should look eerily familiar because it is basically a copy and paste from last couple of weeks ago with some very slight modifications.
I'll just go around, um, Bill, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Linda?
Are we doing too much with our TIDS moving things around like this? I'm, I'm just kind of curious about that. I, sometimes I get leery about too many TID districts and doing, moving things.
This is a, what this is, this is a product of similar to what we had talked about last week. The, uh, low interest rate environment that we're in. And normally there's anywhere in the neighborhood of two to three million dollars of, of, uh, cash that's tied up in, in, uh, longer-term treasuries, CDs, those types of things. But given this interest rate environment, it does not make sense to tie that kind of money up. And so the way I look at it, this $900,000 that we're advancing is similar to a CD, except it's a CD that we're just paying, paying ourselves back. And in the TID 9, or no, TID 10, this, uh, this will save TID 10 about $100,000 and gets it on stronger financial footing at least two years sooner than what we were modeling out, um, without that, with prior to, uh, refunding and saving this 110,000 now. So this, this type of thing, I think is, it's utilized in some communities to try to do inter-fund, uh, advances. But I don't know how active it is out there. I've only worked in two communities. Al's worked in a couple of communities. I don't know if Jamesville did a lot of this stuff when you were there.
Yeah, we did a lot of inter-fund borrowing. That was a pretty regular thing. And we charge ourselves interest. Yep.
Because you, you save issuance costs, you save all sorts of things. And knowing that TID 10 is going to be on stronger financial footing two years sooner, at least, is a good thing.
So there's very limited things that the state provides us as far as financial structuring. So when we can take advantage of what is available to us to stabilize things, I think that's a good idea. If that makes sense.
Yeah, now since this is a loan, a general obligation loan that we took out to, because, to construct the lift station that we're paying off early with money that we used to have invested that is not receiving the return that it used to receive.
And it's, and I found financial statements going all the way back to 2002. This, this is the first time in, in 2002, we're way above 50%. I couldn't find any from the 1990s. I tried to go digging in a box somewhere. But certainly this century, I would conclude, this is the first time we've been below 50% of our, um, general obligation debt load. And that actually matches the debt policy that the council passed a couple of years ago and coincides with the strategic plan. And we did write in the debt service, um, policy at the time that we are writing it, that we weren't necessarily in compliance at that time, but with the, with the goal of trying to get to below 50%. And this certainly achieves it.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Yep.
So Linda, do you, do you just want to summarize what you just learned?
Really, what I would, what I, what I wanted to do is just make sure that if anybody comes back and listens to this, that they kind of understand the whole moving things around and the benefits of it. And I know we talked about it at the last meeting, but it never hurts to, never hurts to educate the public. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Ryan, any questions or comments?
Nope.
Devin?
No questions.
I just want you to know, after every council meeting, after team building, we're going to start doing TIF and TID mini quizzes. As you're all going to go on a speaking tour to the downtowns to talk about it. So I don't have to attend all the meetings.
You guys did great.
Okay. So is there a motion? Teresa?
Okay. Uh, I'll recommend approval of resolution 2020-28 to authorize, uh, the redemption of the taxable general obligation refunding bonds dated April 22nd, 2020 and waived second and third.
Yeah, we don't need to waive the second and third and adopt on a resolution. That's only on an ordinance.
All right. I'll second.
I'll second.
All right.
Okay, any questions or comments?
You wanted to say a portion of the taxable GO refunding bonds, right, Teresa? Because they're not refunding the whole piece. Yeah, we, we don't have the other two-point-eight million laying around, so we'll, we'll stick to the portion of-
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone to post? Okay, that motion carries. Item number nine. Discussion and possible action on addendum to assessor contract.
So this is a, an addendum to a discussion we had way back in May. That was five months and twenty-eight days ago, for those of you counting. On the assessor contract to hold off on the 2020 market revaluation. And as we discussed back in May, Master Appraisal agreed to bring forth an addendum to the existing contract, an amount not to exceed twelve thousand dollars to conduct the revaluation in '21 or '22. And as kind of outlined in the memo, this year we've paid twenty-eight thousand dollars, of which ten thousand was for the work that he had completed before the revaluation was stopped. And then in 2021, we would pay eighteen thousand for the maintenance that spelled out in the contract, plus the remainder of the 2020 revaluation that was reversed, plus the twelve-thousand-dollar option for, to, to complete the revaluation. And that's what's included in the budget. And then for 2022, which is the last year of the contract, the contract would just go to eighteen thousand dollars for the maintenance. So when we're looking at, you know, some of the issues that we think will come down from the state in terms of revenue and things of that nature for 2022, that twenty-thousand-dollar reduction in assessing services from 2021 to 2022 should help that immensely. And my guess is, we're at, going into 2021, our assessment ratio will probably be in the mid-eighties because we're in the eighty-nine percent range right now. Just based on what I've seen properties sell for and in relationship to what they're assessed at, we'll probably be in that eighty-four to eighty-five percent range. So it'll be good to try to get that back up closer to a hundred percent. So we're seeking authorization to have city staff sign the attached addendum to the city's 2020 through 2022 assessor contract.
Devin, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Ryan?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Bill?
Questions.
Okay, is there a motion? Linda?
I make the motion to authorize city staff to sign the attached addendum to the city's 2020, 2022 assessor contract.
Is there a second? Was that Bill? I don't, I, I don't know, like, three hands went up.
Who got the first?
Okay, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, okay, that- All right, item number 10. Discussion and possible action regarding creating, the creation of a workplace diversity and inclusion policy. So many of you attended the YWCA Racial Justice Conference. And also part of our strategic planning is to have a diverse and inclusive community. And how we carry out some of our strategic planning goals is, you know, to walk the walk and talk the talk and create policies that help move us closer to reaching those goals. So what I submitted to you was a sample policy, and it's just for you to look at. And in talking with staff, there may be options for us to combine some of the aspects of this policy with existing policies or have this be a standable, standalone. But what I, I really wanted you to do was take a look at it and give staff direction on whether to proceed in addressing these issues in our employee policy procedures or speed order. So I'm just going to go around again and ask you if you have any questions or comments. Bill?
No comment, other than, you know, move forward.
Teresa?
No comment.
Larry?
No comment, I like the idea of putting the two together in one document, the inclusive, inclusiveness and the diversity. The thing I would encourage is be sure we consider the elderly and those with physical challenges too in that whole, you know, diversity setting.
Brian?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Devin?
No questions.
So is there a, a general consensus or will take a motion to direct staff to explore creating or creating a new policy or combining other policies to look at diversity and inclusion in the workplace? Linda?
I'll make that motion.
And Devin, do you have your hand up? Devin seconded it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone to post? Okay, thank you. So, committee reports. I know some committees met this week. Parks, did Parks and Rec met? Devin, anything you, you want to add to the Parks and Rec Committee?
I will let Inga touch base on that, I was not able to make the meeting.
Okay.
Um, Parks and Rec had a really light agenda, and we unfortunately didn't end up having a quorum for that meeting. But the purpose of the meeting was really to start talking about 2021 goals and objectives for the commi- commission. So we'll pick up that conversation again in December. Typically, the commission will get together for a holiday, two-for-one burgers at Junction Pub in December. And that's obviously not going to happen, so we're going to do, try and do a virtual hamburger outing together in December in combination with, with a meeting, so we'll see how that goes. Story Gardens did meet before the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting was scheduled. And we had a productive conversation, we're talking about some different fundraising opportunities for the subcommittee. And maybe, Ashley, do you want to talk a little bit about those?
Sure, well, coming up on November 29th, we have a fundraiser at Mad Pizza. So you can order online or do curbside pickup and to stay there for the Milton Public Library. And twenty percent of your meal will go to the Story Gardens.
What date was that?
November 29th, it's a Sunday. And it's all day. Yeah, it's 10:30 to 9:00, I believe, so it's all day. Angie created some greeting cards, she painted some of the flowers that were featured in our pollinator garden. So we are going to get those printed and sell some greeting cards at the fundraiser. And then we're also doing an online store. We'll have totes and t-shirts and picnic blankets, I believe, with the Story Gardens logo on it. So hopefully that'll be launched soon.
Anything else for any other committee meetings?
We had an unbelievably long Plan Commission meeting, I can't believe we were able to wrap it up before this meeting started. It was just under the wire. I think we met for like, two minutes and fifty-eight seconds today to approve a new sign for a new business that's going in on Parkview Drive.
And that is a perfect example of government efficiency at its peak, so.
Yeah, but we will have a special meeting on December 3rd as opposed to December 1st, which would be our typical meeting date, because we have a lot of items that are coming up on our Plan Commission and Council agendas in relation to the, the major project that we discussed two weeks ago. And a lot of those items are coming through the, coming through the pipe now. And we'll have to have a special meeting with the Plan Commission on December 3rd. Due to noticing requirements, we'll be creating our new TIP district and beginning to look to annex some, about a hundred acres into the city of Milton. And then the council will meet at a special time on December 7th, or a special date on December 17th to effectuate those two items.
All right, lots coming up. Okay, staff reports, Chief.
Um, I don't know that I have very much, I don't remember. So this body has not met since we got news last Monday that we did achieve our accreditation. So we are good for another three years. The, don't have any details, other than there was a unanimous vote to approve, so feel pretty good about that. Haven't seen the final report yet, but we'll be requesting it. So very proud of my folks for making us look as good as we did.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Well, and they can't look good if they're not doing good. That means that, you know, yeah, they're doing well. Good for you. Good on ya.
May I, may I ask, offer a suggestion? It'd be really great if you could do a, a little acknowledgement of that report when you get it, not only to us, but to the courier, to, with the idea that helping people understand that there are police departments out there that do a good job and are doing their very best to serve the public, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That has been my intention for a week, so it's still on my to-do list that I plan on doing a news release and pushing it out there, because we did a news release to advertise that we had, you know, public could come and give public comments. So I think putting out a news release about being accredited or re-accredited is, is probably a good thing to do.
Yep.
Yay.
Excellent, excellent. And Ashley?
Um, we will be moving to curbside on Monday, so starting Monday, only curbside pickup and computers by appointment. Cat's attacking me, other than that, just doing what we do.
Thank you, and I know that is, that's not easy, this is, you know, transitioning back and forth. We're asking a lot of our staff, and we're asking a lot of our community, and I, you know, I want to acknowledge that. And, you know, let everyone know that we appreciate that. And the council has been proactive in the safety of our community and, and, you know, passing policies and following the Rock County phased reopening or, I'm, I'm not sure how we, it's not reopening, we're just going a little bit backwards. But, you know, the idea is to, you know, take some deep breaths, stabilize the numbers, and then we'll, you know, we're going to move forward, this pandemics don't last forever, they certainly last a long time, but not forever, so. Keep the goal in mind, keep it, keep it in mind, so. Thank you. Howie?
Um, let's see, leaves are done, we actually got around the city twice, at least twice for every residence. And so there'll probably be a few piles that stagger out that we'll probably get later. Right now they're sweeping the streets to get rid of the, you know, whatever was left. Holiday lights are scheduled to go up this week. And we're just kind of reworking schedules down here for the, you know, going back to the phase one situation, so.
Thanks.
My kids enjoyed watching your crew working on picking up leaves in the area.
Yeah, it gives a lot of the kids something to watch.
They were fascinated.
Kids like, kids like John Cruzan, who gets a kick out of things and posts them.
He does, he's here, he's one of your biggest fans, and we appreciate John sharing the accomplishments of the DPW. So, you know, Scott, make sure you send your press release to the courier and to John Cruzan, please. Okay, Mark?
They paved the shoulders on Jamesville Street today. The concrete pavement repair job is wrapped up, I don't know if that was before the last meeting or not. We saw some of the utility items that we'll be working on going forward for next year with cottonwood lane, some of the design for those stations. And started watching everybody's favorite sewer-related item, watching the sewer televising for this year's segments that were done, were performed, so.
So do you like, give a rating, is it like a G, PG, like, how, how are we? Four stars, five stars, what do we add here?
It's pretty basic, just, you know, like a high-low media priority and describe what the problems or issues are and what recommend, what recommended improvements we could make.
I just want to point out that when you said that, you know, Jamesville Street was finishing up, like Larry Lane's smile was hardly containable. Thank you very much, we appreciate that. All right, Inga?
Um, I, I just wanted to say that as long as everything goes according to plan, we'll have another public works staff member starting on November 30th, which will bring them to full staff, which will be great to have them at full staff again as well.
Excellent. And Al?
Well, this whole meeting has kind of been a staff update from Dan and I. But, you know, it's obviously the work of all of us and a culmination of a lot of, a lot of hard decisions that have been made throughout the year. And, you know, we've even had 2021 in mind throughout this entire budget process as well, knowing that that's going to be another challenging year. The other thing, and I'm sure folks have probably heard this in our, in our small community, but we had the untimely passing of one of our committee members last week. And that's incredibly unfortunate, you know, well-known member of our community, Mr. Jim Polarski, former teacher, served on the ZBOR, ZBA. So we, you know, our thoughts are with his family and, you know, certainly a difficult time for a lot of people.
And Dan, is there anything else that you want to add?
I think the only other thing, Al, we were going to just, I know you brought it up in one of the emails and you loosely mentioned it in the committee reports, was moving the December 15th meeting and making it on the 17th.
Correct, yep, we will, if that's okay with everybody, and I, I know I put in the email last week, or actually over the weekend, that we will, because of the noticing requirements for the creation of TID 11, we aren't able to have that noticing requirement be satisfied by December 15th, which would be our normal meeting. But it will be satisfied by December 17th. So we're looking to have our council meeting that week moved to Thursday, the 17th, to avoid having two meetings in one week. So hopefully that's okay with everybody. I haven't heard from anybody that it's not. But that would really be a benefit to keep, continuing to move that project forward, because then we get into the Christmas holiday and New Year's, and so we just want to make sure we keep moving forward on that.
And that is not to alleviate the December 1st meeting?
Correct, we will still have the December 1st meeting, that is absolutely correct.
Okay, all right, so did I miss any staff reports? No? Well, I didn't get my, my meditation put together for y'all to do like a ten-minute meditation, deep breathing exercises me. But, as many of you know, I ordered some team building cards. So we're not going to meet before Thanksgiving, correct?
That's the goal.
Excellent.
Okay, so, um, this will be impactful, because this is a year like we have not had forever, my entire life. And I guess, I don't know, raise your hand if you've lived through a pandemic, I don't think any of us were around for 1918. All right, well, I might have been in another life. So, thinking of the past year in retrospect, who would you like to thank?
Who would be like to what?
Thank, who would you like to thank? Thank. Who would you like to thank?
My wife.
Okay, who was that? Was that Larry?
I'm aboard with him. My wife too.
Y'all just want to raise your hand if you're gonna thank your wife, just to get the.
Well, I better raise mine then. I got another answer, but I'll.
Let's not say that out loud, Larry.
I am in trouble now.
Well, I can be more sappy if you want me to than thanking my wife. I want to thank every single person on this screen for continuing to work hard and be supportive in a very difficult time. Some of the decisions we've made have been unpopular. Some of the decisions we have made have not been made in consensus. But we've always had support from the council, and at the end of the day, the staff takes that direction and moves forward. And we know we have tough times ahead, but I, for one, am confident that as we face those tough times, we'll do it together. And seeing the pattern of behavior, or pattern of decisions, and pattern of compassion that the council has shown takes a weight off of a lot of our shoulders, that we know we're not fighting an uphill battle when it comes to some of these tough decisions and tough situations that we face. And that's related to the pandemic, that's related to reopening plans, that's related to the budget, that's related to staffing, that's, you know, the tough decisions Ashley's had to make, the, you know, it's just, I never really hear from staff of, oh, gosh, you know, I don't want to take this to the council, or what's the council going to say? Or, oh, my gosh, you know, I'm afraid of what's going to happen. And that's because of, you know, the consistent support and consistent message that you all have sent to us and to the community. So, sappy, yes, but very, very true, and I do mean it very, very sincerely.
I would like to thank my friends and my family for being super supportive during this time, because it's, it isn't easy. And I just, you know, when you're an elected official, especially in a leadership position, I want to tell you that 80% of the time, my family does not come first. The city of Milton comes first, the community, the duties come first. And, you know, that's what you sign up for sometimes when you're an elected official, and that's what I signed up for. But my family and my friends have been really, really super supportive. And I want to thank all of you and the community, because overwhelmingly, our community has tried really hard to be safe this year. And this is new for all of us. It's hard for all of us. And, you know, we don't always agree on the path forward, because we don't have a frame of reference, you know, really. And so I just, I appreciate this community and the council, because we do have to have leadership together. And you guys are doing a great job. You're supportive of the community, of the staff, and of each other. And so, you know, next year, I can't wait for Thanksgiving next year. That's all I gotta say. You know, got the, you know, keep the goal in mind. Everybody, we want everybody here next year for Thanksgiving, right? So that's me.
Well, I'm thankful for my patients and my clients, in my work. This has been a tremendous year, a tremendous strain for people with mental and addictions, mental challenges and addictions. And I'm grateful for what they've taught me about perseverance, about starting over, about having faith that things will work out. So that's really meaningful to me as a person.
I just want to thank the library staff, because they're amazing.
I want to thank my family for all of their support.
I have to, I want to thank my husband and my kids and their spouses and kids for all of their support. You know, one thing that this pandemic has done is brought us together, even though we're so far apart from each other. And, you know, they've been very supportive to me, and they've shown me. We talk about a lot of different things outside of Milton, and about how other people live. And, you know, my husband is always talking to people, and they keep me going.
I mentioned being thankful for Ethel and her support, and that certainly is number one. But I'll make a point in terms of being just so proud of the library staff. And kind of backing up what Ashley says. You know, it's been amazing to see how the library staff has managed to keep connected and probably make new connections with the community through their online presence. And in that spirit, I guess I'll also thank the inventor of Zoom. As, you know, as awful as it is, on Wednesday nights, except when there's a fire commission meeting, I participate in a trivia game with folks from Center College in Kentucky, where my son's on the faculty, with, you know, other people, some of the parents of other faculty members and friends and so on. Every Saturday, we have a Zoom session with our grandkids in Minneapolis. And, you know, it's hard for me to imagine what going through this pandemic would be like without this kind of, even though it's virtual, this face-to-face kind of contact with people.
I would have to say our children and friends. My husband's had a very difficult year, and it's been wonderful to have that support, both for him and for me, to get through that and deal with lots of restrictions from the pandemic.
I don't know who's left to go. So I'm going to say my husband, because not only is it a pandemic, but I have three nights of meetings this week, and it's not every husband that would be as supportive as he is with two children also at home. And I'd also really like to thank our daycare provider, Karen Reed, for being so amazing with our children and being able to continue to stay open to help us manage them and manage our lives a little bit better.
I've kind of lost track of who's left. We don't have to go away, or don't have to go, right?
I've lost track of who's left. I don't know.
Okay, this is who I know, because I'm not counting all you husbands being like, oh, this is an easy one. Although I do believe your spouses deserve recognition and appreciation.
To be fair, Mark Langer was first, so he should get credit.
Because Mark gave me $50 to get the question early. Thank you. It's my Thanksgiving dinner. Okay, I'll tell you who's gone. Al, Larry, Ashley, Devin, Linda, Bill, Teresa, Inga, and myself. So Scott, you're up.
Yeah, I raised my hand, so. It's been a very interesting year, and I couldn't have told you this time, almost identically this time last year, how grateful that I'd be that my wife lost her job. But it made homeschooling go so much more smoothly and enabled me to go to work, so.
I'm still gonna go with my wife, because she puts up to be in the house all the time now, so I'm still sticking with my wife.
Howie?
Well, besides family, wife, and, you know, relatives that have been able to adapt to changes, I'd like to thank the people that are able to change rapidly when all this goes on and not continually be upset about all the different changes we've had to do. You know, with all our city changes, everybody's life changes. And they could, you know, continue to have a fit every day, but they're not. You know, they're adapting and they're trying to get better. And I think the majority are kind of hoping to see an end to everything, so. So they're, you know, thankful to the people that are hopeful, so.
I'll say I was thankful for nice warm weather this summer, so we're able to get together with friends outside, because otherwise it would have been really bad if we would have had a really wet summer. I don't know what we're gonna do the next four months, but.
I would suggest chess.
I hear there's a really good trivia game on Wednesdays.
Yeah, they're always looking for players.
Oh, my God. I would need a dictionary and a thesaurus to be in that group. Mark S.?
Oh. Well, just besides being thankful that the city of Milton has a fantastic clerk, I would say, thinking about it, I'm thankful for that, what I call that still silent voice that puts things in perspective for me and gives me courage and hope to continue moving forward.
Thank you. So did we get everybody but Rebecca?
And Kim?
Are they both on?
I think so.
It's just Becky twice.
Oh, it's Becky twice?
There's been a Kim on this whole time?
I, okay.
She's like pretending that she's not even paying attention to our meeting.
She's covering city now, doing five things.
All at once?
Yeah, that's your chat. She's chatting.
Oh, she's zooming. Oh, she's got five Zoom meetings going on simultaneously.
She's thankful for Zoom too.
Yeah.
She is. Okay, we'll give her a break this time. Wait till we have to do the mindful meditation together. Okay, so, next meeting. Now, we've talked a lot about dates, but the next meeting is December 1st for City Council.
Correct.
Okay, and then, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Ryan motion, and Linda seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, thank you, everyone, for all of your hard work. Enjoy whatever.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.